My daughter will.
I'd like to call the Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we're beginning tonight with...
Oh, it's a bad idea.
Move it down to the stoop.
They did that to me on my first day.
First meeting, really, everybody?
Well, it's only right that you have intentions yourself because I was too. Yes. So... On behalf of the board, I'd like to formally welcome Greg DeSantis to the table. Welcome. Greg comes to us with a wealth of experience in the field of higher education and currently works for the Connecticut State Colleges and University System. In addition to his vast experience in the education field, Greg has also served as parliamentarian of College Senate and has generously agreed to be our board's parliamentarian as well. So, we welcome you, Greg. We thank you for your service to the Madison Board of Education and we look forward to working closely with you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Galen is the chair of the hazing committee.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, recognitions?
Recognitions.
Very good, okay. So, this month is the Connecticut Board of Education Member Appreciation Month. So, the Madison Public Schools is joining the statewide celebration this month to acknowledge the efforts of local board, school board members. And in Connecticut March is proclaimed School Board Member Appreciation Month. It's a month-long observance, thirty-one full days, with four day, board members, each and every day.
When is our parade?
The high schools have a quarter of the day for board members every day. But the truth of it is, is that this is, as you all know, a volunteer position. Though I do think, though, that there's a longevity bonus for Seth and Jess. You guys get that this year?
Yes.
Yeah, you do, okay.
I just found out it's a volunteer position. I asked them.
Yeah, but there is a longevity bonus. You guys have crossed that threshold.
We get a hundred percent raise.
Yeah, you do. You double yourself. Okay, so I'm gonna editorialize a bit here because I am, and I think people who've worked with me for a while know how much I believe in local control. And so, in the spirit of really recognizing boards of ed and the folks here, that's what this is all about. That's what I love about this, is that local decision-making. When I've been involved in fiats, and people on this board have been involved in statewide or national fiats, they rarely are successful if any. Problems, I was an urban principal. I worked in a very urban environment, and I found that problems were always best solved closest to where the problem existed with the right resources, and that's kind of what we have here. So, I appreciate, on behalf of the administration, on behalf of parents, staff, students, appreciate the fact that a lot of ours, out of all the boards, I think the board of ed is probably most demanding. You have it over the selectmen, over finance, and everybody else. So, thank you very much, and we do have a very cool token of appreciation. Laura, thank you Laura, had a very, very cool idea. We have completely outdone ourselves this year.
Ooh.
No coffee mugs, none of that.
I liked my umbrella.
Oh, we've beat the umbrella.
Oh, yes! That is the best one. Yeah, Laura, love you! Thank you, Laura.
True force, mom.
You are.
This is good swag.
I love some swag.
We know how to make chess.
I have a different name board member on the match.
Thank you.
I like the color, too.
District color.
Lori, I'm ready.
Lori, you have to do something.
I'm gonna rewind to that over and over and over.
And then Katie just said this way, if we can start posting the videos of our meetings online, that would be a big, oh, you're a big this. And Greg, yes, mechanics change out, your broken shirt.
Matt already did.
Matt did already.
That's it, yeah, right.
That might be better than my yes.
You're shorter than me.
So, I guess the students' report is gonna be given by Matt Parkinson.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, moving on, is there any member of the public who would like to participate? We'll move on to the student, I suppose, in a report. I imagine they are deep into rehearsals for the Sunday.
Probably.
And so, Mr. Flintton's report.
The report, okay. So, a week ago Friday, I sent out an e-notify to parents around the entire concept of safety, security, and just to reassure as much as possible, given the events of February fourteenth and so forth. Tried to make it as holistic as possible, not everyone signs up for e-notify. Maybe those people don't sign up for e-notify, actually watch the meetings. But I wanted to make some public statements just around those topics and just for newer board members to just raise the idea that these, the specifics of safety and security can all be talked about in executive session. They're all confidential, we don't talk about them publicly, but they can be, it's one of the board's primary responsibilities, sort of see that. So, we had a great, we have a great resource from the National Association of School Psychologists, and NASP has done a wonderful job over the past number of years, really, advising school districts, administrations, and so forth on how to approach conversation with students, how to help parents, how to help educators to process these types of events. I'm sure you're a card carrying member, so you're well aware.
I use it all the time.
Yeah, the resources are incredible.
Valuable.
Back in two thousand, well, back in December, right on the anniversary of Sandy Hook, the five-year anniversary, a very common sense statement, two-page statement, went out from NASP with just five recommendations. And I think as best they could thread the needle to not make it a political statement, but to make it advocacy for students, they called for five things, which I believe we are doing very well here and continue to do well. Number one is a supportive learning environment, a welcoming, inclusive learning environment. I got a nice glimpse of that today at the PTO meeting at Daniel Hand, and I missed the planning committee meeting because of part of this. We had GASP present, which is Gay and Straight People Student Club, phenomenal job, their plans for the rest of the year and so forth, and activities that they would like to do. And that's a nugget of just really how I think we go to creating welcoming environments. I think the investment the board has made in some of the proactive approaches of responsive classroom and so forth, and teaching pro-social behaviors, also goes a long way towards that. That's the first big one from NASP. They also recommend to increase access to any type of mental and behavioral health services and supports in schools. They make, the third recommendation is to implement school safety initiatives that balance psychological and physical safety. Obviously, school psychologists are very mindful of psychological welfare. Number four, training, effective training, school safety and crisis teams, which we've been doing, I would say since Sandy Hook, it has been a new era for us in the last five years. And the last, they do talk about gun laws, but they do it in a way, I think they really try to just put out a message of caution to enact and uphold gun laws, really that prevent access to people who have the potential to cause harm to themselves or others. So, there was no real advocacy one way or the other on types of guns, just making sure that they don't end up in the hands of people who could do damage. So, those were their five recommendations. I thought that just mentioning that e-notify would lead people to their website with the link, and there was very good resources there for parents. What we're struggling with is, not struggling with, but we're trying to help parents with, and educators, is what's an age-appropriate response for these types of discussions? I think it's reasonable to assume that every high school kid knows just about everything that happens from a school violence perspective, you know, most if not all. I think it's reasonable to assume that a lot of our seventy-threeers have a good idea of what's been happening nationally over the past two years. I think below that, we have to be very careful. I think there are parents, definitely elementary level, and I would say Brown as well, and my feeling is we have to respect and honor parents' wishes to either share or not share, how much to share, how to frame it, and that's a real dividing line in our system in how we respond. So, the resources from NASP, I thought, were really helpful for parents to look at and talk in lightest terms. So, that's number one. Number two, school-based resources. I implore parents, and any parent who has a concern, the building administrator is the first person to go to if you have questions about the security and systems in your child's school. And if you have any concerns about their emotional or social or mental welfare, there are mental health staff members that can help with that as well at each school. We do have a very strong partnership with Youth and Family Services. They're in our schools, they're very active. Scott Cochran and a number of other of his teammates actually sit on our district committees. I know that sounds repetitive to folks in here, but I want to say that every time on camera, because that type of partnership is not found in a lot of towns. The partnership we have with the police, and that we have with Youth and Family, it's a very, very coherent, it predates me, it's a very coherent system, they're very active. We had our wellness team met, our whole child wellness team met a couple of days after the Parkland tragedy, and Scott was there with a couple of members of his team and joined us and helped us kind of strategize any kind of responsive actions we need to come up with, so. The actual security, so the security measures, as I said earlier, these are confidential, but some of the things are very obvious, and the strategy is obvious. The perimeter of our buildings, that was the first thing that we did for Sandy Hook. The town ponied up resources instantly, it helped us to secure our buildings. This month will be six years I've been on the job. When I started here, you were able to walk into our schools unvetted, just to kind of walk in and go right to the main, there was a sign, please report to the main office. Sadly, after Sandy Hook, that all changed, and the perimeters became secured and became locked and so forth. The police officers that we have are SROs, also are on our campuses, and they serve to provide a variety of roles. Obviously, security is one of those roles, but they're also very involved with our student body. They know a number of our kids by name, develop relationships with them. You'll see Officer Bull on the playground, you'll see Officer Rosario at the playground, in the cafeterias with kids. That's something that's very symbolic, but also very substantive, and we've talked about the growing relationship with those kids. What that does for kids is they get older and they have that positive perception of law enforcement, that if something doesn't seem right, I maybe can report that a little easier with that positive perception. Patrol cars are huge, to have them on-site, and they're there prominently. We have a district safety committee that meets four times a year, and that safety committee is comprised of school-based personnel. So, the administrators are part of that, the police department's part of that, our SROs are part of that, and then where needed, we also have emergency personnel from the town side, fire chief, fire marshal, and so forth. The school safety and security plan was developed after Sandy Hook, it was revised, excuse me, after Sandy Hook, after that tragedy, and we still revisit that regularly. Some of the more obvious benefits from that committee and from the work there was some very advanced sophisticated communication systems, and the primary operating principle is twofold. How do we, no matter what the threat is, how do we speed up responses and slow down threats? Threats can be weather-related, threats can be a burst pipe, threats can be something unthinkable, but how do we speed up responses, how do we slow down threats? Every one of our interventions gets vetted through those two concepts. We also increased with a grant from the state of Connecticut, security camera surveillance around the district as well, which also helps to slow down and speed up as well with our responses. The door locking mechanism, training is ongoing. Our SROs get advanced training through the police department and come, and they give it back to us, and they turnkey the training to us and help us with our responsive measures. Our building staff are well-trained in procedures, so the traditional fire drill, lockdown, code red, and so forth. We've gone through some really good exercises since Parkland and reflective exercises of, we're assuming you all know what to do in these situations, and now we're asking the questions and getting very good feedback of, well, I'm really unclear, students and teachers, especially at the secondary level, what happens when? And I'm not talking about the when with scenarios that could just be conjured up out of your imagination so much as more protocol. If I'm on the bridge at the high school, you know, it's a little easier when I'm in the classroom, this is time, but if I'm by myself in the bathroom, and that's a process we've been going through with our students and with our staff. There are, through the whole child wellness committee, which I mentioned earlier, proactive and responsive measures. Our proactive ones, I said responsive classroom, any of our pro-social behavioral approaches with kids, even instructional approaches that we do. If you have children in the system, which many of you do, we have an approach that we teach kids called accountable talk. It's how to converse in kind of a critical way with each other, in a positive way, giving feedback to each other. But, you know, our one approach we can always attach new learning to is anything happening in the classroom through teaching and learning. We can always embed it in a course, in a lesson, so we embed those kinds of approaches there that also serve to a more positive environment. Mental health, all the way from, you know, your daily little scratches and bumps in guidance, all the way to our more intense clinical programs like ESS, there's a spectrum there as well. Students, I want to talk a little about students. Student voice is something that through the curriculum, we have tried to really amplify and really tried to get student input on, student focus groups, through a variety of things. And students aren't shy in our district, they'll share their opinions pretty openly. And we are working with our student body right now to respond to the kind of national movement on March fourteenth. I'm gonna share some information about that tonight as well, before we share it with our parents, I want to share it with the board, some general information there. I think, as I said earlier, being age-appropriate is the most important thing that we're trying to consider here, is we can't assume that moms and dads are having conversations with kids at a certain grade and lower, so really looking at the secondary level, Polson and high school, and trying to keep in mind that Brown, though they're a little more sophisticated, obviously, we can't assume every mom and dad is having certain conversations with their kids. And three weeks ago may feel like three years to some eleven-year-olds or ten-year-olds or nine-year-olds, elementary, I think we all would agree. We had a conversation about how we approached the anniversary of Sandy Hook a few years back, and there was no acknowledgement with the lower levels. There was an acknowledgement at the high school, and there was a very, very brief acknowledgement at Polson. So, we kind of looked at how we did that, and we're trying to mirror that with the approach to responding to Parkland, especially on March fourteen. So, our high school. Our high school, this was a challenge for us because when the national movement, you know, the talk of it, kind of out legs, we weren't here. We had our four-day weekend. So, we got a call from Kathy Meagan, who's the education report from Hartford Current, and I said, "We're not shy, but we have nothing for you. There's nothing to report, our kids haven't been here." Shortly thereafter, Mr. Sajid Terry had a meeting with some students, and then he met with the formal student leadership group, and then brought the kind of grassroots kids together with the student leadership group in one very large meeting that I joined in. And our message to those kids is, this is not about us. I said to them point-blank, I see adults, when it comes to delivering a message right now, I think the adults have one of three roles. We have to stand side by side with our kids right now while they express wanting a permanent end to senseless school violence. We stand behind them and support them, or we just get out of their way. We have some very sophisticated advocates right now, student voices at our high school, and there's a difference of opinions on how to do it, but there's a lot of consensus that they want to send a message, that they want to be part of a national conversation to end school violence. Some are very openly approaching it from, you know, a gun rights perspective, some are not. And as I said to them, my advice then is to keep it broad into end school violence because the issue is so complex. To narrow it to one topic, I think, wouldn't really serve the movement well. Keep the conversation alive so that we put as many resources as we can to changing this. There seemed to be some type of tipping point, at least from my opinion, in February with this. There were school shootings in January, and none of them really got much in the news. I mean, there was a pretty bad one in Kentucky a week or two before that. Something triggered, and the students are very active right now, and I think we would miss an opportunity not to serve, particularly our high school students well, if we didn't kind of help them get their voice out there. So, on March fourteenth, and they were very clear, they wanted to make sure that there would be no adult voices on March fourteenth, and we said, "No, we don't prefer to speak, it's up to students." There are a few things in play right now. They are planning to wear gray and red in support of Vargary Stonem Douglas High School in Parkland. I am working with the media to get coverage for our kids because I promised them, if they have a message that they want to get out there about ending school violence, I'll help them amplify that message. I've also contacted our state legislators, and I've contacted our congressman, Courtney, and our two senators, U.S. senators. I've talked to their offices, and I've had great conversations. Representative Kokuruta has committed to coming during the time block from about nine, we're doing nine-thirty to ten-thirty loosely, high school schedule, nine-twenty to ten-twenty-four, nine-thirty to ten-thirty for discussion purposes. Representative Kokuruta will be here, and she will be there on a listening tour with our students. Senator Kennedy is working on that as well. Our Washington delegates are usually in session midweek, so they're usually with their constituents on the Monday, Friday, so they can't be here, though we have a pretty good confirmation that Senator Murphy is going to videotape a message specifically for our students and our population at our high school, and asked to have that projected to them as this program ensues at the high school. And Representative Courtney, I spoke to one of his aides, he said there's interest in school districts kind of joining together and maybe creating a town hall for Representative Courtney, but student-based, so students, it won't be us, it'll be for students to speak, to Representative directly. So, I have offered with my colleagues in the shoreline to begin that, and to try to initiate something like that. And that could be a month or two down the road, and the one thing the students said, "We don't want March fourteenth to be a supernova, and we do this event and then we move on." Because that's what bothers them with the way the whole response to the tragedy seems to be from their words, is that we get upset, we get excited, we do something, and then it goes away. So, I'm looking to work on that. But from nine-thirty to ten-thirty at the high school, students will leave their classrooms. We're gonna shorten each period by about five or six minutes, so they'll have a full school day still, they'll have all their class periods, and we have very responsible kids, they don't want to miss their classes, it's right before exams. So, we're going to shorten periods. They will be able to walk down and walk out of their classroom, and they'll have choices. They can go to the library if they want to, if they want to do work, if they want to read, if they want to listen to music, if they want to take a nap, play chess, whatever they want to do. If they do not want to participate, they don't have to. And the rest of the student body will be able to go to three locations, the gym, and then the areas over there with the calf. The band will be on the bridge, and the band will play "America the Beautiful" as the students march from their classrooms down through the side of the building. They'll enter the gym, sing the Stars by Angler banner, and two students from the student leadership will make addresses to the student body. After the student speeches, the students will be asked by a member of the leadership team to exit the bleachers, and if they so choose, if they want to stay, they'll participate in a lie-down for three minutes. This is all student-driven, by the way, none of these ideas came from us. And that is symbolic of, three minutes is representative of the amount of time it takes to purchase a gun in some states of the United States. Ten o'clock, if the students are interested in the national walkout, they're invited to a walkout at the gym and to proceed to the dining and assembly hall, and symbolically the minutes are seventeen minutes, based on the losses in Parkland, and they will have a walkout in the dining assembly hall for seventeen minutes. There's a video option for students, if they want to videotape messages to send to other students at Stonem high school, Stoneman High School, and they also can videotape messages of themselves and send to elected officials, they want to get their voices out. Social media will kick in, I'm sure at this point, and they'll post their messages, and we will have a letter-writing opportunity for them as well on the bridge, dining assembly hall. And it's really about a supportive message to the students at Stoneman High School and a message to their elected officials. And this is all their own prerogative, they do not have to participate. So, we're gonna videotape the event for the student body so they can share it as much as they would like. We're providing an hour for kids to do this, and we are strongly discouraging and not allowing leaving the building and walking out of the building. And the primary message behind that, and the kids got it instantly, was safety. It takes one person to say, "Oh," so there'll be twelve hundred students on the turf at ten o'clock on March fourteen. One person with that intention. And the kids that we met with, and Mr. Sajid Terry has met with upwards of a hundred kids in different groups, one-on-one, small groups, large groups, they all got it, they get it, it's crystal clear. Staff has the option of participating if they want, and they don't have to. We want this to be choice-based, and we want this to be driven by your conscience, not to follow just because students are doing something, you're gonna follow along, but we want to give them a forum, and I think it's pretty clear, March fourteenth will not be a normal day in any high school in the United States. There is going to be a very unique day, and we want to make sure that we can really make that energy go into a positive, meaningful place. The kids are leading this, they're incredible, it's really humbling to be working with kids like this. So, that's where we are right now. This will allow me to notify the parents, you know, probably by the end of the week. We're still trying to kind of work through some of the details at K8, just the kind of messages we want to give. But this was something that the students felt really strongly about, and we were able to work through with Sajid Terry. And beyond that, that's kind of where we are.
What's happening at Polson?
Polson, Polson has, we're still working on that, but the focus that Mr. Henderson was trying to, through the PTO, was trying to facilitate was a letter-writing campaign. So, that's probably the primary thrust of that. This has been more, if you watch nationally, it's been more of a high school movement, so we're trying to honor that. I mean, I've watched almost every opportunity I could, every student presentation publicly, and they've been high school kids, so we're trying to, you know, stay within that. But we also want to keep in mind that if a student at Polson, one of two needs, has a need to express themselves, that we can facilitate that, or has a need to share concerns and worries, that we can respond to that, too.
And what about at Brown?
I think Brown is probably more similar with our elementaries, we're really trying to keep it, you know, we can't assume that moms and dads really have had conversations there, so it's a case-by-case thing. If a student speaks up, then we can, you know, work with the parents individually, I'm sure Julie will call home and deal with that.
And are they gonna be spoken to by Julie ahead of time? There's a lot of, I was surprised to see how many Brown students are posting on their Instagram accounts.
Yeah, and the problem is that we don't know how many kids are not, and don't know about it.
Right.
So, I think, I think she's probably best served on a case-by-case basis to deal with, you know, children and parents there. My fear is that we do something global and then really, you know, break a bond with parents who are like, "It's really not your place to tell my kid this."
No, I agree completely, just my kids seem to feel like there's gonna be peer pressure to walk out.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that it's just a normal day.
Well, that's exactly the message that we're gonna be giving. I'll give an e-notify, and I'm gonna encourage parents in my e-notify to take responsibility for your child, and let them know that at elementary at Brown is a normal day.
Okay.
Yeah, and even Polson for the most part, really, yeah. Because if we allow something at that level to transpire, and we're not allowing it at high school, number one, but also then kind of a slippery slope, you know, I'm really afraid for safety at Polson.
I have one at Polson, and I just want to make sure that, you know, it's passed along to Frank, that there are rumors that there are some kids who are going to walk out.
Yeah.
So, I doubt it will really happen, especially if there's a cathartic alternate activity plan.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, it is impacting against a policy.
Yeah, and, you know, we're not naive to social media, and then by the same token, we don't troll social media to find out all, we just can't. So, we hear, you know, for generations there's been buzzes about certain things, they just have access to a louder buzz right now, I think. So, I'm very confident, Julie and Frank, you know, we'll do the right thing, but I do think, Jessica said the right thing, a normal day is really what the expectation is, and that's the message to moms and dads that we want to give. And if you think your child is prepared for an abnormal day, then we ask you to let us know so we can work with them. Because it's really, this is, I think, more of a high school thing, and I understand the buzz, but I think, again, age-appropriateness, I really want to be sensitive. buzz, but I think, again, age-appropriateness, I really want to be sensitive. We dealt with a little bit of this with Sandy Hook and we didn't give messages, it just so happened that the buzz had happened at school. And I dealt with some phone calls, like I shielded my kid from that, you know, and now they go to school and hear about this and, you know, you can't prevent on the bus and everything else. It didn't come from our faculty, it was an assumption it did. So we have to be very cautious around that, but I appreciate the input.
And I love at the high school too, having two there, one who is very involved and one who wants nothing to do with it, that there is the option there as well, even at the high school level. So I think it's really important to allow for differences.
I would imagine there's a number of fourteen- or fifteen-year-olds who, that feels like four years ago now, you know, I just, every kid's different, every kid is different. So having that, we had a couple of parents that asked, can my child as long do anything? They want to study, their exams are coming up, got you covered. We can do that too.
Love that, it's important.
So, anything else on that topic?
Okay, so, other matters?
Other matters, I happened to visit the Daniel Pan PTO this morning, great meeting. We had a couple of students from GASP present, gay and straight people, outstanding presentation. We also had a long conversation about security and safety and then about March fourteen. Daniel Pan's PTO brings in like twenty-five parents every meeting, it is phenomenal. They do a great job up there. And it was a powerful meeting and you were a part of it, well, mostly, maybe more than me, yes. But a lot of questions, similar questions like tonight and some questions about safety and security. And I think there was an overall understanding to the complexity of these issues and if we can simplify it into one solution, it would have been done by now. So honoring the complexity and the individuality of our students. That.
Board member comments?
So, sorry, happy to speak. So I was very thankful that you sent out that email with the overview of the safety and security and it got me thinking that perhaps we are, this board here is not as integrated with that plan as we should be. So I think that having, I don't think we need to do executive session right now, but we should have an overview of what the plan is and I think we should really get integrated and think about in terms of our own planning. So what do we need to be planning for staff for two years down the road? Do we want to look at having a police officer at every school? For facilities? We talked about putting those windows into those classrooms in Poulsen, do we need bulletproof glass? We need to be budgeting for that so that we're really coming up with our own, we know what the safety and security plan is and we know what all the different pieces are and that we're able to actually have our own, you know, three, four, five-year plan so that we can get to where we, we understand more what, how you're renewing it. So I think that's something we should take action on as a board.
It is a great idea and what's lost, what was lost on me and it's not now, is that the board that was in office right after Sandy Hook, that was, you were there, that was pretty much all we did for months. And a lot of those meetings, it was an adopted plan by the board. So I think of it like at the airport, you know, you go through all these mechanisms and suddenly, you know, nothing happens, so now you're inconveniencing, you know, but we really should come back to that, I totally agree. As an aside, the ten-year facilities plan draft that we're bringing to the committee has security there. But what we're doing is we're working with the police department because in two thousand twelve, thirteen, after Sandy Hook, there was an assessment of our facilities done through law enforcement and a list of items to do. And we took care of a lot of them and not all of them and they would go into the capital.
Right, so yeah, so I think we should be looking at it as a whole, even sort of the mental health piece, do we need to be planning for that down the road? Are we going to need more staff? And then also ironically, my last project at work was a crisis management plan that I wrote for the company that I worked for. So it was planned drills, how often are we doing, are the kids doing drills? What is our plan to notify parents of those drills? Like I would like all of that to be a little bit more solidified so that if, you know, if you get questions, we have, we say, yeah, we're working on it and we know.
One of the points TJ brought up this morning too is about not, not planning necessarily or giving too much notice so that they're more authentic, the drills themselves. But certainly I'm sure we could get more.
Well, I think it's something like we have two drills a year and we notify parents at least of the younger kids like twenty-four hours ahead of time so that if our kids have questions, they can talk to them rather than, you know.
We do a, what we realized was that we had different practices across the district when we do a code red drill. Some schools told parents to re-notify, some didn't and it wasn't until we kind of asked the question that we shared like, ooh, probably shall be consistent on that one. We have to by state law do a drill a month, so it has to be fire drill. You have, I believe, is it two a year that you can do a code red in lieu of fire? And I think we made it three. We do tell the students that it's a drill and there's a reason for that. And again, School Site College Association advocates strongly to not keep them in any age in a moment of suspended, you know, anxiety of is this a drill, is this not a drill? We don't tell them day before, but we let them know when we're doing it.
Do you have that crisis team meeting where you have protocols for all the lockdowns?
We do, we do. Every building has their own crisis team. We debrief after drills and some of the more advanced ones were developed by our SROs in the police department.
So I guess that would be.
And they are there, actually, the SROs, I'm sorry, the SROs participate in the drills as well and they will give feedback and they will walk the building and say, this was great, except for, and so they point that out by the critical friend.
So one thing I just wanted to say for perspective is, and then I'll say, I have something good to talk about. Most of us board members are either late baby boomer or Gen X and we grew up under a real firm anxiety about nuclear, you know, total annihilation. And I think, you know, by comparison, think about how we felt and that was even somewhat of a distant fear, you know, like, yeah, it could happen, it's not likely to happen. You know, the fear that the kids live with today about someone potentially walking into their school and causing a problem like that, I think is worse because it's more palpable, you know, and they've seen it happen on TV and elsewhere. So it just doesn't matter of perspective and we think about how we felt growing up in that era that hopefully we're not backsliding into as we speak. But I find that helpful to keep perspective. And then on a much happier note, this last weekend just passed was the Connecticut Classic Show Choir Festival, which was our, I think, the third year that we hosted a show choir festival here and it was a huge success of a fundraiser. It was totally sold out and they sold lots of food and T-shirts and all kinds of, so it was a very successful fundraiser and that will help to fund Vibes' trip to Nashville for the Grand Ole Opry stage for the Nationals. So thanks to, thanks to everybody who attended and supported and all of that.
I'll just, I happened to be at Jeffrey School a couple of weeks ago, leaving, I had a parent-teacher conference in the morning and as I left, the buses were coming in and dropping the kids off and I'd never been there at that time. And it was joyful. It was just like, I never, you know, I get my kid on the bus and that's it. And Officer Rosati was there and it was Valentine's Day actually and so all the kids are coming in and they were giving things to, this is hard, and to Officer Rosati, but just like the process of the kids getting off the buses, the teachers greeting them, just, it was totally joyful. And I wished I could be there every day to just watch it happen and have them come into school, just everyone was so happy, you'd think it was the first day of school instead of mid-February, like, we're back at school again! It was Wednesday or whatever. So it was just a really, it was a lot of tough stuff and it was just, you know, warm my heart, so I just want to share that with you. It was great.
Awesome. Moving on to committee reports, planning committees first.
We met earlier today. Our first agenda item was a science update where Sarah Sandora came to speak to us about community connections. So Sarah came to give us some new updates with the science curriculum she's working on with a focus on community connections, looking at authentic and performance-based activities that are relevant and meaningful to the students. And how can we use data to grow our understanding and can it be interdisciplinary? So the first example she gave is with Fieldhouse Farm, which is on Green Hill Road, and Stephanie Lesnick was supposed to come but unfortunately got called for jury duty. So Sarah spoke on her behalf about a grade two, it'll be their first unit this fall, it'll be on plants and animals. And the classes will visit the farm the third week in September and they'll get a tour of the farm, visit the animals and learn and see the plants they are growing. Then Stephanie will give the kids a challenge. She is looking to save land for animals because she wants to acquire some more and therefore wants to start growing some of her plants inside. So the children will then go back to their classroom and plant radishes. They are proposed by Stephanie because they have a twenty-day growth period and this will be an interdisciplinary project covering science and math. And through this process, the children will gather data, put data in tables, interpret the data, analyze the conditions like sun, water, compost type. And after the children grow their radishes and remove them from the soil, they will then use that soil to move into their unit two, which is soil erosion. So it's really cool. A second example is for grade six. It's with Dr. Stuart Campbell, who is an associate professor of biomedical engineering and cellular and molecular physiology at Yale. And he has a grant that he's going to be doing with Madison for the next two years and the grant includes his time, his equipment and his demonstrations. And this would be for the cells and body systems unit. And the essential questions would be, how do structure relate to function? How do systems work together in the body? How can cause and effect relationships be used to understand and predict how our bodies work? In what ways have engineers worked to improve our health and well-being? The kids will look at cardiac cells under a microscope, both with and without electricity. And the kids will also look at their heartbeats and muscle fatigue using grip and strength equipment and then they will graph and chart the results and interpret them. The third example is for grade seven, it'll be their unit two. It's water and ecosystems with Robert Russo who came. He's a civil engineer who works for the town of Madison. And they will look at water sampling from bower and other ponds in our town. They will compare two samples in their classroom, one that has algae that has been created by adding some fertilizer to it and one straight from the pond. And they have to decide which is healthier, A or B, and cast votes in their class. As they learn more about nitrogen and phosphates in our local waters, they can change their votes. The PBA at the end of the unit is to create a video, of which we saw one example today, where they talk about keeping Long Island Sound Clean. They discuss less pollution and recycling, but also working on trying to mitigate nitrogen and phosphates from getting into the sound by teaching people about the side effects of fertilizer, soaps, oil and gas leaking into our bodies of water and offering alternative brands that they can use and ways of disposal that can occur to try help with this in our community. And the PBA was great. Emily saw it, Abby heard it on the phone, but it was, they talked about, you know, they showed like brands and cars that are big polluters and where you can take your oil and your gas to dispose of it. It was really cool and Robert Russo is super passionate about this and excited to work with our kids. They're actually going to work to get permission to have the PBA videos put on his website. So it's great. So overall, there's been a large shift in the teaching approach and the new curriculum we are putting in place as a result of the new science standards. These community connections will allow kids to have local connections and a local feel for the community they live in while incorporating science and math learnings. We then went on to talk about the planning committee, future meeting times, we discussed the day and time. And we'll be keeping the Tuesday morning slot of eight forty-five and two meetings a month at least through this school year. We talked about future agenda items, we discussed a list of items we would like to review and cover at future planning meetings and Gail will help us manage the agendas and assist in including these items in addition to items she already has listed for this year. Lastly, we talked about the reconfiguration update for Brown and Poulsen and the timeline for redistricting. Gail went through the process they are looking at for building reconfiguration considerations along with the developmental considerations for the programming recommendations. The team is currently working on the model for four or five at Brown, looking at all these considerations as well as the number of hours of instructions over time of a several year period. Once they have the four or five model finalized, the team can move forward with the six-eight model at Poulsen. Their redistricting modeling will most likely begin this summer with the hopes of completing that this fall so that families and staff have time to think about their transition plans and we can also hopefully have PTOs and organizations like the Arts Barn assist with getting groups of kids together who will be together for the first time in the nineteen-twenty school year, like for example, the ice cream social that currently happens at the end of fourth grade before fifth graders go to Brown. And that was it.
Good, thank you. I just want to say that I went and checked all of our laundry detergent after Sarah's , I'm like, do these have nitrogen and phosphate? And I'm happy to report they're all phosphate-free. I couldn't figure out the name of the time.
Yes.
Please, I'll go check.
That's very scary.
The quantity of slime alone that's being made in our house, the laundry detergent I had to see, this is the only thing all the time.
You mentioned PBA, performance assessment, and I just found, I have to read a wide variety of publications, Forbes magazine, Wall magazines, Forbes magazine had an article about the importance of performance assessment versus traditional measures and so forth and how we're doing a disservice to kids if we don't do more performance assessment. I'll forward to the board. Very, but all magazines, Forbes, I think, pretty cool, yeah, pretty cool.
Okay, personnel committee.
Our first meeting is on March twenty-first.
How exciting.
We will have, we will have an update at the April meeting.
First, is it the teachers? Danger for teachers.
Policy committee.
Yes, we have in front of you or in your packet a proposal, a policy for you to review if you are first reading. It's social networking, policy number four-one-four-one. So this was brought to the policy committee last month and we'll bring it to all for our first reading.
So can I comment on this?
Yes.
And I've talked to a few people about this. I have some questions about the policy that we've discussed in brief, but just to raise them here as well. I guess the main ones that I'll highlight here is, as a policy, I think it would be interesting to look at whether or not it could be written rather than from a deficit perspective of social media being more, social networking rather, being problematic at the outset of the document, that it be instead instructive about how to use social networking, especially as a member of staff positively, because it can obviously be very beneficial to the district to use that positively. So I think framing it from that perspective would be interesting from the beginning before moving on to other things. And then my two other questions just broadly to start are, what does this policy gain us over forty-one, forty-one as it currently exists, which is pretty generally, pretty general and doesn't get into specific aspects of conduct? And then the last question that I raised is whether or not there are aspects of this, which it reads to me this way, that are more or less unenforceable because they are judgment calls, value calls, and whether or not that's been vetted with legal. So those are just some initial thoughts that I had about the whole policy as we start looking at it.
Thank you. And that's precisely why we have three readings, right? Yes.
I would just say that policy, at least for the district, policy in the past has been treated as the framework and then the district regulates within that. And one of the regulatory documents that fills in some of the blanks in this case are like the union contracts with the teachers' union, Madison Education Association. So there are, it probably, sometimes our policies do take on the sheen of feeling unsatisfying in the, you know, from the perspective of not really tackling what happens when something goes wrong, but that's by design so that regulation can kick in and fill it.
Okay. Thank you. So finance committee.
We have not had a meeting.
Lauren. Lauren Liaison?
You're scheduled to meet next Thursday morning. I'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you. Audience response to information presented.
I guess I'll say something. I am a Madison resident. I grew up in South Florida.
I'm sorry, can I just ask you to give your name and address? And then, and then when you're done, there's a blue form on the table, if you could just spell that out.
Christina Seawi, thirty-two Texas Road. I have two kids that attend Jeffrey Elementary and our eldest son that attends Brown. We moved here from South Florida. We're very familiar with Parkland. We have friends and family that live there and have gone through what we all witnessed. I'm very much interested, you know, with everything that's going on about facilities and renovation to, to really understand and to see our plan and understand our plan of what we're trying to do. Besides the gun control politicized conversation, there are so many things and so many areas that we can address. Standing in line at Jeffrey picking my child up every day, there's glass. You don't even have to enter a school if you wanted to do something to harm our kids. So that is, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because that's truly my concern. I really want to hear that plan. I know we have, you know, great goals and aspirations for two thousand and nineteen. I would like to see how this is going to be implemented and that's truly, you know, how we want to stay involved and be involved and help out. I mean, I, us personally, we don't care if our taxes go up, like, we need to address this because our kids are just too important and I never want to see this happen again. So that's what we're here to, to support this forward. I'm so happy that you guys have all talked about it and are bringing it up. It, it really, you know, puts us that somewhat at ease, but we still want to remain very much involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would like to just say, sorry, just very quickly, as we just formed a new facilities committee and I would like to invite you to participate because there will probably be some public opportunities for you to come and discuss your concerns. So stay involved. Thank you.
And those meetings are posted?
They will be, yeah.
On the district website.
They will be. There are, there are. It's a newly formed committee.
I think we have them today. Okay. Consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Want to call out two awesome donations. One for sixty-five hundred dollars from Daniel Hand High School class of two thousand and seventeen for the purchase of water cooler and water bottle filter systems. And a donation in the amount of eleven hundred fourteen dollars from VIBES supporters to fund needs for student trips to Nashville, students to go, participate in the trip to Nashville. Sorry. If I can get it out.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So item ten, discuss and possible action. Confirmation of the February twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen special meeting vote to request from the town of Madison assignment and or appropriation of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the undesignated funds that the board anticipates returning to the town at the close of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year for the purpose of effective school solution funding during the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year and to authorize the board chair to submit such requests to the town of Madison boards of finance and selectmen on behalf of the Board of Education. And the action item, the motion is, bear with me to repeat this, to approve confirmation of the February twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen special meeting vote to request from the town of Madison assignment and or appropriation of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the undesignated funds to, that the board anticipates returning to the town at the close of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year for the purpose of effective school solution funding during the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year and to authorize the board chair to submit such a request to the town of Madison boards of finance and selectmen on behalf of the Board of Education.
Second.
So, so that was the motion and you seconded. So discussion.
I have just one. This just reads slightly differently than the one that you read because this reads that we are just anticipating returning the money, not that before the other one had provided that the money was returned, just in case we spend all of this year's money. Sorry.
Don't be sorry. This was from our board attorney, so.
So this is, this is the agenda, as I understand it, as a parliamentarian, this is the agenda item.
It doesn't read the same as it did in the special meeting. There was the clause provided that we returned the money in the special meeting and this says here that we are anticipating, which means they already think they're going to have that money at the end of the year, which we think, but, does the, the motion?
Because this is just the agenda, the motion.
The board anticipates returning to the.
They should say the motion does. But there's no motion up here.
For the same.
Right. So it says they anticipate not provided that we do. Do you see the difference?
Here, I did the amendment here, actually.
And the attorney didn't, but we can certainly.
Can we alter that? Because I just feel a little more comfortable. Like, what if we have a big hit or?
That was the ECS funds.
Well, no, it's not the ECS. That's totally different. This is, at the end of the year, if we don't spend all of our money, we return a portion to the town. We can sometimes buy like furniture or stuff that we, and we can also return a portion to the town and they put it somewhere. This is saying, the last time, we were saying that if we did, provided that we returned that money, we would like them to give us, put a hundred and twenty thousand aside to pay for the ESS. But this says that we are planning to give that money back as opposed to just in case we do, which I think is important to state.
And you're right.
And I can't even actually go, but I do think it's.
No, no. I think that's fine. So, so, parliamentarian, do I reread the motion? Or do I amend the motion?
You can amend the motion.
Please bear with me, guys. I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's a, no, it's important.
Yes, you can amend the motion. Actually, a friendly amendment, I believe, has been made to your motion, correct?
A friendly amendment.
Yes.
So do I have reread it?
Move to, move to accept the amendment.
The friendly amendment?
Although you have to.
But you need, but you need to reread it.
Okay, let's read it.
So we are reaffirming that.
To approve the confirmation of the February twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen special meeting vote to request that the town of Madison's Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen create and commit as an assignment of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance, which amount shall be assigned to the Board of Education for the purpose of funding during the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget year, the Effective School Solutions Program, providing the Board of Education first utilize unspent funds at the end of fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen to return the same amount, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the town. I further move to authorize the board chair in conjunction with the superintendent of schools and or director of special education to draft and to submit such a request to the Board of Finance and Selectmen specifying their and the purpose and parameters of this opposed appropriation. That's the motion. So I need a sec.
It's been said. You're rereading.
Okay. So comments. I have, I have a, just a brief statement. As board members know, at our February twenty-first, twenty eighteen special meeting, we unanimously voted in favor of requesting from the town of Madison for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year an assignment and or appropriation of a hundred and twenty thousand for the purpose of funding the Effective School Solutions Program at Poulsen Middle School. The board anticipated this appropriation being drawn from the undesignated funds that the board expects to return to the town at the close of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year. This cooperative approach was initiated by Jean Fitzgerald, our former chair and current chair of the Board of Finance. In essence, the board was requesting that the town assign to the board funds that have previously been appropriated to the board, but which the board, through its prudent financial management of the Madison Public Schools, had not expended. Unfortunately, at a subsequent Board of Selectmen meeting, a member of that board claimed that the February twenty-first vote had not been in compliance with the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act and was therefore invalid. I believe I speak for the entire board in respectfully disagreeing with that characterization of our vote. Now, the board could pursue that conversation with the Board of Selectmen. At the same time, that course of action would, at least in my opinion, simply draw everyone's focus away from what is really important here, and that's our students. This board unanimously voted in favor of requesting this appropriation because we recognize that effective school solutions is critical and cost-effective means of helping children who may be struggling with issues, a distance that would be provided within a welcoming environment of their own neighborhood school. And helping the children whom, who parents have entrusted to the Madison Public Schools is the single most important mission that we have as a board. Therefore, rather than engage in a back and forth over the correct interpretation and application of the Freedom of Information Act, I am asking that the board simply vote to confirm its February twenty-first vote so that we can move forward in our quest to help these children. Thank you. Any other comments? So, did we? No. Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Back to which? Thank you. Sorry. So we are, motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. I am supposed to abstain. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So a motion to approve the minutes of the February twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen Board of Education special meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So I know Laura, you had asked for people to send you comments, did they? Because they're still not in it.
It's not your comment.
Why didn't you know if anybody was, didn't you know?
So.
Goes back and forth, whether or not they were going to be in there.
Right. So because of what Robert's Rules tells us, the minutes of a special meeting include a summary of what happened. We checked this also with the board attorney. It's because there was a lot of, there were not many written statements around.
There were some, though.
There were some, but again, when we went back, I wrote a statement.
That's fine. But for future meetings, if people have written statements, we're going to include them if it's not a special.
I think for regular meetings, Greg, and you can help me, no. But we've always done that, though.
There's no provision to specifically do so in the bylaws or in Robert's Rules, but.
There's no reason not to, though. We've always, always done it that way.
Well, when I, when I submitted my statements in the past, I was doing it voluntarily. Because I think if it was important enough to write down on paper.
You could submit items for the record.
So would it be useful to ask, have a vote on including written statements for meetings so that everybody's on the same page or do we just?
I don't know why we would change it. I don't see a reason to change it.
I think people find it very informational.
I think what was different about this meeting is that there really weren't written ones.
Yeah, no, she's saying aside from special meetings.
Right. Okay. I'm saying aside from special meetings, I like to continue the practice that we've always done.
Sure. Submit.
Submit. If you have a written statement, then you submit it and it's in the minutes.
Submit it to Laura.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because there are times when we have complex discussions on the record.
Talking about complex discussions, I'm talking about pre-written statements.
Okay, so you're not talking about someone's notes that they jot down during the meeting?
Nope.
Okay.
I think you might want to clarify it in the bylaws somewhere, just so that there's a rule about whether or not that's an expectation.
I've been sitting here for four years and anytime anybody has a written statement set for you longer and I read all the minutes for two years before I sat on the floor and they were all in it.
We just approved. They had comments and I think it's better. Because not everyone's going to go back and watch a video.
No, of course. There, I think the question for me is, in terms of the rules, what if somebody doesn't want to? So it's almost setting the standard for, do you want to make it so that if someone does bring a written statement, they are obligated to enter it into the record? Or it's optional? If it's optional, you probably don't have to do anything, but if it's, yeah, everybody should do it. That way somebody can't say no.
I think it's good practice. I leave it up to the individual to decide, but if you're going to say it, it should be in the minutes.
Policy committee, maybe that's something you could look at.
You sure will?
Okay. Any other? Since I wasn't here for the whole meeting, the minutes?
Probably not.
You can vote on the first thirty minutes.
Abstained? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Any old business? Any new business? Oh, no, that's not even on here. Any future agenda items? And the meetings and dates of importance are attached and I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Need adjourned? Thank you, everyone.